Please join me in welcoming the Honorable Carol Alvarado, Drew Darby, and Matt Schaefer. Thank you for being here, ma'am. Good to see you. Representative, thank you. Chairman, thank you. Good to see you. I'm going to begin by quoting the great band Dan Hicks and the Hot Wicks. Some of you may know, "How can we miss you if you won't go away?" Honestly, I mean, I said we all expected to be somewhere else. Representative Schaefer and I were talking. He was actually off doing his Naval Reserve duty in Pearl Harbor until a couple of days ago. Had to come back early to do this session. I know that Representative Alvarado and Darby both would love to be somewhere else. I sure would like to be somewhere else, but here we are. Chairman Darby, why are we here? I don't mean that in the existential sense or the biological sense. I mean it in the practical sense. What is it that leads us to be back here?
Well, evidently, we have some unfinished business.
Do you doubt the governor when he says that it's important for you to be here? That evidently makes me wonder whether you're with the governor or not on it.
Well, I'm certainly with the governor in being here. I think it's part of our duty. There's some important issues to be discussed in this special. My wife says the special, special session we're going to have together. By the way, it's always good to be with my colleagues in the House and you, Evan. It's always good to be a part of the Trib family.
Thank you.
But we're going to be together for at least 30 days. I think we're going to roll up our sleeves and get to work. There's still a lot of important issues facing the state.
Yeah. You believe that there's unfinished work from the session?
I do believe that. I think that, you know, there are important issues that I'm going to choose to work on.
Right.
I think school finance is always an overriding concern of mine.
If only it were on the call.
But, you know, we don't know what's going to be on the call and what's not.
So you think the list could expand or change?
I think it could. And hopefully, we're preparing. I have prepared numerous bills in which to address some of the issues that I think are important.
Right.
TRS care and our retirement system, our retired teachers, and of course, public education.
Right.
Property tax. I filed a couple of bills that if you want property tax relief, I've given property tax relief. I've simply done away with the amino tax. And it's only a $21 billion issue, but who's counting?
I'm sure you can do it in 30 days, right?
I'm sure we can.
Yeah. Well, Chairman Alvarado, one way to think about this is if you couldn't finish the work you needed to do in 140 days, you have an opportunity to address the issues that were left unfinished, and it's called the 86th session. Why is it necessary for you to come back now? Why can't you just wait and do it in 2019?
Well, I know we have some sunset issues that we have to deal with, but everything else, I think, are issues that Texans, a lot of Texans really aren't asking for, like the bathroom bill. Some things that I know our committee will be taking up, for example, will be the tree ordinance, other issues dealing with local control.
Yeah.
I think that's been sort of the theme this session, and as a former city council member, it's an issue I'm very sensitive to. I think we're overreaching our limits on local control, and I think that people elect mayors and county judges and commissioners and council members for a reason. They're there to govern their local government, and we don't have any business trying to overreach and take away that local control.
So from your perspective, there really was no need to come back? I mean, sunset, obviously, was something that you could have dealt with, didn't deal with, got to come back and deal with that. Where's your sunset and signee die button, by the way? You don't have that on today?
I don't.
No. Would you just as soon deal with sunset and go back home?
I think that's what we should do.
Yeah. Representative Schaefer, I'm tempted to call you Senator Schaefer, given your affect toward many of these issues. You seem to be in league with many of the people in the Senate, as much as in the House on this. You do believe there's a reason to come back, and you do like this agenda for the special.
I'm glad we're here. I think there's some preborn babies and some people facing end-of-life issues that are glad we're coming back, and they're glad that the governor has taken the leadership position to put those issues specifically on the call as well.
Right. You mentioned that the abortion issues, which we will come to, I hope, in a discussion of the items on the call. You were very instrumental in the discussion of abortion during this session and the omnibus bill that passed. Why couldn't you just do the things that are on this call during that? You guys had 95 votes. You passed everything almost by a party-line vote. Why didn't you just deal with the stuff during the regular session?
Can't get to the floor.
So the amendment process would not have allowed you to deal with some of the issues here?
Well, we were constrained by the rules of the House as to what was germane. There were the insurance portion, the DNR portion. There's some other pro-life issues that were not germane to Cindy Burkett's omnibus bill that we wanted to see come forward. The Texas Medical Board sunset bill is a great vehicle for those, and it was never moved in the House.
Right. It's interesting that when we talk about the special, you brought up the abortion stuff first. I don't doubt your sincerity. I know you care a lot about that. Is that why you're back? Because of abortion? In your mind, is that why you come back for a special session?
I would call, if I'm governor, you bet I would call.
Governor Schaefer would have called a special for that reason?
You don't have any, you don't get to talk about good schools or good roads or any of this other stuff if you don't have life.
Can I ask why, I mean, why are you so obsessed with this issue? When we have other issues like school finance reform, we need to have a discussion about expanding Medicaid, making college affordable, and you're so obsessed with this issue? I don't get it.
Well, I think that when lives are literally at stake, there's really a matter of precedence. And so I think that we can also walk and chew gum at the same time. We can handle these issues and handle the important issues of school finance, higher education. We care very much about those things, and I do work on those things. And if you, you know, look at the bills I've filed and things I've worked on, you will see that it is part of what's important.
You agree with the governor's decision to bring you back for property tax?
Absolutely.
Bathroom?
Absolutely.
Sunset, obviously, is something that has to get done. Representative Schaefer, who is responsible? I don't mean what is responsible in the kind of, again, sort of practical sense, but who specifically is responsible for this work not being done? There's been a lot of finger pointing, as you know, and far be it for us in the press to encourage this kind of finger pointing, but somehow, somehow, I will, I will put my reservations about finger pointing aside for the moment here. Who is responsible for this?
When you look at the items that are on the agenda, they're all, I mean, it's potentially a conservative home run derby.
Right.
So that's a long list of conservative items that didn't get done. Many of those passed the Senate. Many of those couldn't get anywhere in the House.
Right.
So I think Speaker Strauss plays a role in that, absolutely.
The Lieutenant Governor has been much more willing to call the speaker out by name. You seem a little hesitant to do it. You think it's on the speaker?
I just did.
Yeah, but you kind of got there. It was a marathon, it was a marathon and not a sprint, Representative Schaefer. I was expecting a little bit more of a, okay, so you put this on the speaker?
Well, I think that, you know, you can look at, you know, the property tax reform bill that the Senate kicked out. It was dead on arrival in the House. School choice, dead on arrival in the House. Privacy issue, dead on arrival.
There was a procedural vote on, I would take issue, Representative Schaefer, with the school choice question. There was a procedural vote on school choice that was tantamount to a vote, and your side lost by about 60 votes. How was that vote not taken, or how was that issue not addressed on the floor of the House?
I think it was a conceptual vote. Those were not votes based on actual point-by-point details of what we were going to do. That was not a vote on actually implementing a program for special needs students.
So you think it was a conceptual vote? So choice legislation comes to the floor in the context of the call that the governor has put forward for the special. You think it passes?
I think it's going to be, have a lot better chance.
Chairman Darby, you are said to be an ally of the speakers. You embrace that characterization?
Absolutely.
Is it his fault that you're back?
No.
You know, Representative Schaefer and the Lieutenant Governor, and frankly, the governor has intimated it, although not necessarily said it outright, that this is on the leadership of the House and specifically the speaker. Why is that wrong?
Well, let me tell you. Speaker Strauss is not a directly hands-on speaker that some speakers in the past have been. He allows the membership to take the role and take the lead in a lot of these issues. And so he takes the blame for the failure of some of these ideas to actually come to fruition. But really, it's the body, that the large body that supports right-thinking government, right-sizing government. If it didn't get to the floor, it's because the membership chose not to bring it to the floor. If it didn't pass on the floor, it's because the membership did not want it to pass. And so Speaker Strauss, you know, if, to me, part of the criticism of him, if any, would be that he did not get involved in a lot of these decisions. These are, these are decisions made by the membership of the House, and if we don't want a bill to move, it doesn't move.
And it's not because the speaker chose chairman, who, like him, did not believe substantively in the passage of these, of this legislation, and therefore, they were essentially doing his work for him, so that basically, he wasn't the one responsible, but he was the one responsible.
But you know, chairman will lead a committee, and there may be nine, or 12, or 13 on a committee.
Right.
I mean, let's face it, chairman or one vote on that.
Right.
And if the membership of that committee wants it to pass, then it has a good chance of passing.
You believe that the Lieutenant Governor is in any way responsible for you being back today?
Do I think the Lieutenant Governor's responsible? Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
No explanation necessary?
No explanation necessary. I think it's clearly apparent that this was all staged.
Right.
This fictional dragon of sunset not passing. We passed two sunset bills that we could have extending the life of these agencies.
Yep.
The Senate chose not to take them up.
Before I come to Chairman Alvarado, Representative Schaefer, I am looking at Representative Biederman right now, because he's at the center of the story that was published in the Dallas Morning News after the session that suggested that the Freedom Caucus had willingly conspired with the Lieutenant Governor to slow-play legislation at the end of the session in order to force a special. Would you like to fact-check that story for us right here? Is that true? Did you guys coordinate with the Lieutenant Governor?
We talked to the Lieutenant Governor frequently during the session.
Did you talk to him at the end and agree to slow-play legislation to force a special?
I did not.
Do you know if any members of the caucus did?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know. But if they did, and we knew that our efforts to stop the sunset safety nut bill were going to give us a chance to be back here talking about a very conservative agenda.
Right.
Then our positions aligned with the Lieutenant Governor quite nicely.
You're good with that?
Yes.
Right. Chairman Alvarado, you have a problem with the speaker or the way the speaker ran the House's session, and you put the responsibility for being back here on him?
No, not at all. I would agree with Chairman Darby. I think the speaker was dead on when he addressed the issue of property taxes. If you really want to do something about lowering property taxes, then look at the way we fund our public education system, because if we're not funding it with the state, then we are funding it with our property taxes. It makes sense, and that is the foundation of where we ought to start if we're talking about property issues. The speaker allows the chairs of committee to hear bills that they want to hear, to vote when they want to vote on particular issues.
Yeah.
I think he has been a very effective leader. I just, I take issue with my colleague, Mr. Schaefer, as chairman of the Freedom Caucus, because they have been supporting bills that, in my opinion, are not freedom. You talk about you want limited government, less government, but yet, here we are with more government. You want government in whenever, wherever, in our bedrooms, in our bathrooms. We've got the show me your papers bill. We have the show me your gender bill. I just, I find it so hypocritical in some of the things that you advocate for and then do something else.
Let me give you an opportunity to respond before I come back to Chairman Alvarado. What about, or do you hate freedom, Representative Schaefer?
I think that we're looking at this from two different perspectives. Certainly, when you talk about...
That would be the understatement of the morning so far.
Clearly.
You talk about more government, and you know, you get into the issue of the property tax and putting some constraints on local government. You say, well, that's more government. No, local control at the citizen level, at the taxpayer level is, that is the maximum local control that you can have. So when local governments begin to act in a way that constrains personal and economic liberties, then the state as the sovereign needs to step in and restore that freedom to the individual.
Chairman Alvarado, one of the things I've heard from Democrats since the session was over is, yeah, we like Speaker Strauss, but you know, he didn't really protect us on a lot of this legislation that passed. In the end, he didn't protect us from Representative Schaefer's amendment on SB4. He didn't protect us on a whole bunch of issues that, quite honestly, we would have preferred the speaker to stand between us and them on. And there were some Democrats who have walked out of this session concerned about whether the speaker did a sufficient job for the full body. Do you have a point of view about that?
I think, I think he did the best that he could at the time. You know, sometimes things are happening so fast on the floor. You have amendments, which I call a very anti-freedom amendment that Representative Schaefer offered up, and things start to snowball.
And the Democrats had more than one opportunity to pass on that amendment.
Well, I mean, you advocate to be Freedom Caucus this and Freedom Caucus that, but that amendment, I think, was detrimental to a certain segment of the community, and it is very anti-freedom. Your amendment has put Texas on the map of passing the most extreme form of a sanctuary city bill, and I think we're going to win in the courts.
Representative Darby, I want to move from the speaker to the governor and ask about the governor's role in your being back. Obviously, it's the governor's decision to call the special session. Nobody else can call it. Lieutenant Governor or anybody else for that matter can say, we want a special session. But at the end of the day, it's on the governor to make the decision to call, and he called. But it's not just that he's called the special session. He's also called names. He said that if you all don't pass his list of 20 items during this 30-day period, you're lazy. That was his word, not mine. And then yesterday, or two days ago, pardon me, at the Texas Public Policy Foundation Policy Conference, he said the following about his view of your work during the session. This is a quote from the governor. "I'm going to be establishing a list. We need to establish lists that we publish on a daily basis to call people out. Who is for this? Who is against this? Who has not taken a position yet? No one gets to hide." So now the governor has a scorecard, or will be publishing a scorecard daily. Is the governor's affect toward all of you on this the one that you'd like to see?
You know, my parents, as I was growing up, threatened me at Christmas, you know, Santa Claus is going to find out if you're naughty or nice.
Yeah.
And whether or not I'd get a present or not, so...
Do you like it anymore then than you do now?
No, I didn't like it then, and I don't like it now. Okay?
Yeah.
The reality is, you know, I object. I think we worked very hard in this session to come to the right position on some issues, a lot of the issues that are on this 20 items. We did pass bills. It just, in some people's eyes, it wasn't, didn't go far enough, didn't do enough.
Right.
So I think we did a good job, and the governor, he gets to be the governor.
Yeah.
I'm just a lowly state representative, okay?
Was he?
I just have to take what's been handed out. While I may disagree with the reasoning, I do think it provides us an opportunity in this special session to talk about some important issues that were left undone.
Did the governor do enough during the regular session in his role, Chairman Darby, to make it so that some of these issues that he believes are important enough to bring you back for were dealt with? We looked at the list of items that he put on the call. There were a whole bunch of them, maybe as many as half, about which he did not say one word during the 140 days.
You know, I do think that if there's an area that I would have liked to have seen more input would have been some of these issues during the regular session, when we could have done something about it. To weigh in after the fact is very difficult to have to deal with.
Right.
You know, I would say that if there is a criticism, that we, that it would be helpful to have more input from our chief executive officers.
Yeah.
At important times during the session.
Early enough to make a difference.
Early enough to weigh in on these issues so we can get a feel.
Yeah.
The idea that you'd come in at a late date after the dies are already cast and the process is already mostly done.
Yeah.
And come in and weigh in on this issue, I don't think is helpful to the process.
Chairman Alvarado, are you lazy?
Absolutely not.
No. You take issue with the governor's suggestion that somehow, if you all don't do his 20 items, that you're somehow lazy and not worthy of the service that you provide?
No, I think you're going to see some of us that are, that have a chairmanship, that we will be holding hearings on substantive issues and doing the work.
He's going to call you back. You're going to have your hearings. It may not be exactly what he wants, but you're going to get your stuff out there.
That's right.
That's the point. Representative Schaefer, you Freedom Caucus guys love scorecards, right? You live in the republic of scorecards all the time, every two years. So presumably, if the governor has a scorecard, you're good with it, right?
Hey, I think the public ought to grade us on what we're doing. Anybody out there that wants to, you know, there's a lot of just business organizations. You know, Farm Bureau does a scorecard. A lot of people do scorecards. I have no problem with that.
You have no problem with that. Do you believe that you know what you're being judged on? My colleague Ross Ramsey, who's over there, has a column today saying, "Governor wants to have a scorecard," but he hasn't actually said where he stands on some of these issues. He put the bathroom bill on the call, is he for SB6? Is he for Simmons? Is he for Patty? Is he for something else? Do you even know, within the confines of a scorecard, what you're being judged on with regard to the governor?
The scorecard I look at is my district and the voters in my district.
Right.
And the concepts that the governor has outlined, you know, ultimately, you know, we've got to see a bill and see the details of it.
Of course, it won't be his bill. It'll be somebody else's.
I don't worry about that.
It'll be somebody else's bill.
I don't worry about the governor putting his opinion on our work.
So you'd advocate, Representative Schaefer, for members voting their district? That's what I think I just heard you say.
You should vote on principle, and you represent the values of your district.
So if Chairman Darby doesn't see eye to eye with you on some issues as a fellow Republican, because he votes his district and you vote yours, you're good with it?
Of course. I would want him to be faithful to that.
And would you then restrain yourself from supporting a primary opponent to Chairman Darby if you agreed more with that primary opponent? Because after all, you've said, all Chairman Darby did was what you did. You voted your district.
I'm not going to be involved in any primary against Chairman Darby.
Okay. Well, I have one bit of news at least out of this conversation. Okay, very good. Representative Schaefer, you're a fiscal conservative.
Yes.
Okay. Is it fiscally conservative to spend a million dollars to bring you all back here during the session?
Absolutely.
This will be the most expensive special session that's ever happened in the history of Texas.
I think if we get some meaningful property tax reform done, if we get some of these things done, I think the taxpayers are going to say, money well spent. Look at the spending limit measures that the governor has talked about doing, constraining the growth in state government, constraining the growth in local government. Now you're talking about a million dollars, whatever cost it is per day or whatever. This is going to be money well-spent for the future.
It's a down payment essentially against the savings you'll enjoy during the session.
Absolutely.
Chairman Alvarado, you do not see it that way.
Well, the revenue caps and then the spending limits on ourselves and local government, to me, it's like dumb and dumber. Okay, we have done this in Houston. There's a case study on revenue caps. It doesn't work. In fact, our credit rating has been reduced, and when you're in that position, it costs you more to borrow money. We have revenues that we have missed that could have gone to pay for 280 police officers for benefits and their salaries, and the limitations on spending. It's one thing to put it on ourselves, but we want to pose that on local government? That's just wrong. Every county is different. Our county judge, Ed Emmett, had a wonderful op-ed in yesterday's paper about the different characteristics of county governments throughout the state. And some have flood control districts, some have hospital districts. You can't just put a one-size-fits-all approach on this.
Yeah. Chairman Darby, was the tone coming out of the session, the legislature, you know? I mean, there was that bad last day. But generally speaking, it seems to be the commonly-held perception that the tone in this legislature was bad.
It was bad.
Yeah.
I think everyone recognized there were a lot of outside forces working in the legislative process.
Has it gotten better in the interim, do you think? Have you all been in timeout long enough to come back and to be able to work together?
Gosh, I hope so.
Yeah.
But I don't know that to be a fact.
Yeah.
Emotions are still high.
Yeah.
There's just no question that people are frustrated.
Yeah. See, I keep asking, Chairman, what is going to be different, right? So you go away, you come back, and the question is, what's different from when you left?
Nothing.
The issues on which you have already voted, like, I, no disrespect to Representative Schaefer, but I wonder if the school choice vote, just to pick one, is apt to be any different during the special than it was during the regular?
Absolutely.
On some of these other bills that have come up and did not pass? My question is, what's different?
Well, I think the House's position on a lot of these issues remains unchanged.
Yeah.
I know my, my position on these issues, I don't care how many times...
You're not going to vote any, you're not going to vote there.
I don't care how many times it comes up, I'm going to vote the same way, because I truly believe that this is what is in the best interest of not only my district, but of the state of Texas.
So when Dave Carney, the political consultant to Governor Abbott, says to us the other day, absolutely, there is a possibility that if we don't get this work done during the special, first-called special session, we're going to call them back. We're going to, in fact, the speaker said to The New Yorker, actually, as much himself. He said, "Look, I'm potentially prepared," or intimated at least, that he was potentially prepared to let the governor make the decision to call you all back if you need to. You're good with that. You're not going to change your position to avoid that.
Absolutely. I will tell you right now, if I have to be here for the rest of the year, now, my family may not agree with that, my business may not agree with it, but I am not going to change my position on important issues facing Texas just because I have to come in and ring a bell and said, "I'm here," because somebody tells me I have to.
Rep. Schaefer, you'd come back again if need be.
What's different is the focus. The noise and the clutter of a regular session and thousands of bills is diminished greatly.
Yeah.
And you, in the media, are now talking about a much narrower set of issues.
We are.
So folks back home are thinking about a much narrower set of issues, and they're thinking about it more intensely.
Clarity.
There's clarity that's not available, and so I think that has the potential to cause representatives to focus in a way they have.
And if it does not get done, if the 20 do not get done during the session, and the governor chooses to call you back, you're good with it?
Absolutely.
Representative Alvarado, do you see that prospect as a real prospect?
I think it's a prospect. I'll be here to cast the same vote. I mean, we're going to do this over and over. It's like, what's the definition of insanity?
Right. Got it. Let me ask about some specific stuff on the call. Anybody up here, and I'm kind of doing this a little bit more like game show speed round a little bit, but we'll get into some of it specifically. Anybody object to the sunset legislation? Are there going to be any no votes on sunset? You all are agreed? That's a, check the box?
Well, except on how that sunset bill is presented. If it's a full sunset bill, that's one thing. If it's simply extending the dates of these agencies, and only that, then, you know, I think that will be the House's position. think that would be the House's position. We're simply extending the date of all of these agencies to go through the sunset process again.
That's your intention?
Yeah. That would be the House's--
Now, Representative Schaefer, did I hear you say earlier, I didn't mean to miss this, that you intended for the sunset bill to be a bit of a Christmas tree, and you had lots of ornaments that you intended to hang on it?
The Texas Medical Board bill is a great opportunity to pass pro-life measures.
Right. Do you think there are 76 votes in the House to amend the sunset bill for the medical board with the kinds of amendments you're talking about?
Absolutely.
Are there 76 votes?
Absolutely. There's way more than 76.
Chairman Darby, you've been there a little longer than Representative Schaefer. Do you think there are 76 votes for those ornaments?
We just have to see. I mean, we face a lot of these amendments every bill that comes up. I personally would like to see all these agencies go back through sunset, reauthorize them, go back through the process.
You would prefer an uncluttered bit of legislation?
I am. I'm looking for a straight, let's reauthorize these agencies, let's do what we're called to do, and reauthorize them for the next session.
Chairman Alvarado, it's often said that the Republicans have a politics problem and the Democrats have a math problem. The Republicans are at odds with one another politically. There are people in the Freedom Caucus and people who might have one time before it was a pejorative defined themselves as moderate. But they have 96, they have 95, pardon me, they only need 76. So they don't have a math problem, they have a politics problem. You all are basically aligned, but you have a math problem. You only have 55. You can't do anything on your own, you can't prevent anything on their own. If Representative Schaefer's view of the world prevails, and the sunset bill for the Texas Medical Board is amended in the way he describes, you all can't prevent it, can you?
Well, we're going to try. I mean, I think we've done a good job on using the rules to our advantage sometimes, using the procedures. Hopefully, we can convince some others to stand with this. These are issues that Texans really aren't asking for. If you look at what Texans care about, they want to make sure that our economy is strong, that we continue to be creating jobs. And if you look at legislation like Senate Bill 6, and we heard from the Texas Association of Business yesterday, and someone from the Dallas Convention Visitors Bureau of Conventions and Events that have already pulled out of Texas. So I think it's interesting that now that the Democratic Party is very aligned with the business community on this issue, and also on bills like Senate Bill 4, who are showing Texas as a state of not to come do business, not to move here, as a state that discriminates.
So you'll continue to do your work regardless of whether the numbers work out for you. You can't say, though, for a certainty that you can prevent Representative Schaefer on this or anything else from doing--
Absolutely. We do have a duty to vote our district, but we also have a duty to vote what's best for the entire state.
Yeah. The other issue, Representative Alvarado, other than sunset, that seems to have no sharp objects on the table, relatively speaking, is maternal mortality, something that you didn't deal with during the regular, but is back on the call. Is there going to be agreement about the maternal mortality stuff in this?
I would think so.
So, okay, we've got two things, sunset and maternal mortality, basically. Phew, okay. Only 18 left. We dealt with the abortion issue in the sense that you believe, and there's disagreement necessarily about this, that we have a call to bring back, and there are three or four items on the call that are specifically related to abortion, likely to be an argument. As well, there are a number of issues related to local control. Again, Representative Schaefer, I would say, you've got 95 Republicans in the House. If it's not the most conservative House of all time, it's pretty damn close. You absolutely have the most conservative Senate of all time. If you couldn't pass these local control items during the regular session, why come back and do it during? What makes you think you can come back and do it during the special? Again, it's the focus and the clarity.
We passed the annexation reform bill in the House, and it got stopped in the Senate. So, you know, it was filibustering at the very end. So, you know, we took a lot of Fridays off. We came in at 2:00 on Monday a lot. We took more time getting committee assignments. There was a slowness to the work in the House this session.
Again, this is the Senate argument that somehow the procedural piece of the way the House was managed worked against getting everything that you wanted to get done done. You're sympathetic to that idea?
Absolutely.
Chairman Darby, you are not sympathetic to that idea.
You know, this state's been existence for 170-plus years. Without all of these bills, I think this state can survive some more time without some of--
So if local control bills were not on the call, and you didn't deal with this stuff until you came back in 2019, you'd be good with that?
You know, I'm a former city councilperson. I truly believe in local control. I believe it has an important function in our hierarchy of governance. But some have used it as a sword to strike down items that they don't agree with. I tend to be more judicious about that and try to look at the individual issue. While I may fall on the side, for example, last session, House Bill 40, the city of Dent was trying to tell oil and gas how to complete wells, and it was couched in the issue of local control, but what it really was is about local government trying to tell the state how to manage their--
So are you unsympathetic to the local control items, Chairman Darby, on this call?
No, I'm not. I'm not unsympathetic. I do think that cities and counties have a role, and they ought to exercise that role as the state has a role, and we ought to keep in our lanes.
Yeah. What about the requirement, requirement is maybe too strong a word, the suggestion in the call that school districts increase the average salary of teachers? This was put on the call by the governor, but many are describing this, Chairman Alvarado, as an unfunded mandate. Governor can say anything he wants about increasing the average salaries of teachers, but the reality is, there's no money behind that request, and so ultimately, it's a many hundreds of millions of dollars budget line item that was not anticipated by these school districts. You think it's an unfunded mandate?
It is. I think it's unfair to the local school districts, and again, this is very much in line with, you know, local control issues, unfunded mandates. I think everybody would agree that our teachers deserve a pay raise. I know Representative Richard Raymond has a bill that would take funds from the rainy day fund to pay for teacher pay raises. I think that's--
You think the votes are there in the House? You'd need 2/3 to get that money out.
Well, I realize that. I'm not sure if the votes are there, but I think it's a reasonable approach.
Hasn't the governor put you in a box? He calls for the increase in teacher salary on average. You guys vote against it because it's an unfunded mandate. And you may vote against it on principle, but then the governor gets to say, "I'm for increasing teacher salaries," and the Democrats were against it. Hasn't he put you in a box?
I think so.
Yeah. Chairman Darby, can you support this legislation, even if it's an unfunded mandate? Does the superintendent of your school districts back in San Angelo?
Absolutely. I cannot support it.
You cannot support it?
I cannot support it. If we're going to ask them to do something, then we darn well better send them the money to do it. I'm actually very tired of us telling them what to do without--
Without providing the resources. Representative Schaefer, will you be for this?
I think it's very important to see where the money's coming from.
Right. If the money doesn't come from any place--
Yeah.
--which is what the proposal is right now, the money doesn't come from anywhere, you just find it, will you vote no?
I am going to look at the details of it. I am concerned. I share the concern that we would tell the local school board at that level that you've got to do this with your salaries if, you know, we're not having a larger discussion about the finance piece.
But without relitigating it substantively, because we've been litigating it for months and months and months, Representative Schaefer, is a bathroom bill of some sort going to pass this session, yes or no, during the special?
I think that, I don't know. I think it's very important.
I'm interested that you don't know, because I would have assumed that you would have said, "Look, there are more than 80 co-authors on the, or authors on the Simmons bill. That's more than 76."
Well, because we have the same leadership structure in the House that prevented that type of bill moving through the normal process.
So you think it would pass, but you also think it's a possibility during the special as during the regular, as you've suggested, that somehow this gets blocked?
Absolutely. Chairman Cook was not amenable to, you know, doing anything to, with SB 6. Well, for one, it never got referred to the committee.
Do you see Chairman Cook's email to his supporters a couple of weeks ago, in which he laid out what was effectively a midpoint, I thought, between Patty and Simmons on this? It was a schools-only with a little bit of plus position.
No, I didn't see that, but I think it's really a disservice to the public to just call this a bathroom bill, when everybody knows it's really about a whole lot more than that.
Help me understand better what this is about.
So the genesis of this is the Obama administration working through Title IX to our universities, to our schools, saying, "We're going to throw out the definition of the word sex," which for time immemorial has been male and female, this binary reference point that we have, to protect women's programs, okay? To protect women's programs, we have Title IX. And so now, if you take this transgender idea to its complete success, then you have to do away with the binary definition of male and female, and now you have something that is a condition of the mind that can change, and has some cultural reference point that shifts, and so therefore, you are going to erase the reference point that allows us to protect women's programs. And that is fundamental, that's definitional, that we depend upon those definitions.
Didn't the Trump administration undoing the Obama directive solve the problem you just described?
I think it's being litigated all across the country still. The courts are getting involved. You see school districts saying, "We still take that position about Title IX."
So you don't know whether it's going to pass, but you'll vote for something if it comes across. If it ended up just being Patty in the House, would you vote for Patty? A version of the Patty Amendment?
Again, look, we're not going to allow a weed bill to pass without a chance--
So I take that as a no?
Well, I would, I don't want to, I don't want to vote for a placebo.
Chairman Darby, is the bathroom bill going to pass, the House?
I hope not.
So do I take that to mean that you won't vote for anything that comes up on this subject?
I've already voted on this one time, and I don't want to vote on it again.
But will you? But if Simmons, but if Simmons comes up, because there are more than 80 authors on Simmons, I want to ask you point-blank, will you be a yes or a no on Simmons?
I've already voted on that one time, and I'm not going to vote on it again. I'm from West Texas. We know where to go with the bathroom in West Texas.
Chairman--
But the question really is more about bathrooms. What about protecting women's programs in high schools? You know, what about the guy who wants to play women's basketball? You know, what about the individual sports? What about the guy that wants to run in the girls' track?
Let me ask Chairman Alvarado, do you hate Title IX? Is that the problem here? Do you got a problem with Title IX?
No, not at all. I mean, I've sponsored some bills this session that dealt with Title IX and strengthening some things on Title IX, sexual campuses. But I would like to know from Representative Schaefer, what do you say to the nonpartisan economists and our chambers of commerce all around the state that are calling this bill? It's a job-killing bill. It's going to hurt the economy in Texas. How can you ignore that?
Ask Target if it's good for their business. Look at Target stock and tell me if it was good for their--
We're talking about the entire state.
Do you reject the projections that this is going to have an economic impact on this?
Well, let me tell you, a lot of the stories that were put out about what happened in North Carolina were just false. And the Texas Association of Business was engaged in fabricating a lot of the economic stuff on this. And let me tell you, Texas is growing because of the freedom, and the public is with us. Republican voters are overwhelmingly with us on this issue. And, look, people want us to do something that's common sense. They want their girls and their wives and their daughters to have safety and privacy, and that is more important to them than whether one more company may or may not come in from--
Let me let Chairman Alvarado have the last word on this, and then I want to quickly move to the audience.
Well, you're talking, advocating for women. Okay, we also want equal pay for equal work. Why don't you take that up?
I think that that is an issue that, if you all want to bring that to the floor, I'd say, bring it.
And you'll vote for it?
I want to see the bill. But I don't think that we need to add any more protections into the private economy for what we're doing. I think we have discrimination laws on the books that protect women, that's already there. I don't think we need more government to make these decisions.
Let me ask you, does the Freedom Caucus have any shenanigans planned for the rest of this special? I don't mean like Stickland and Kane chainsawing a horse in Dean Wormer's office. I mean like, I mean like, are you all going to make an attempt to vacate the chair or do something with the Speaker? Or would you pledge to leave the Speaker in place for the 30 days?
I would say mum's the word.
Well, by saying mum's the word, non-mum is the word. I mean, clearly, if you intended not to do something, you'd say so, right?
We've got a leadership problem.
Yeah. So are you going to make a run at the Speaker during this session, yes or no?
No, I think that the Speaker, look, let's just be candid. The conversations that I have heard, and the conversations I've been a part of, people are not talking about whether Joe Strauss is going to be the Speaker in 86. They're talking about when and how the Speaker will change. The conversation has moved past whether Strauss is coming back.
Chairman Darby, do you think the Speaker is in any peril this special?
No.
Okay. One way that the Speaker potentially could be in peril, if I understand that, is, Chairman Alvarado, is if you guys decide to go get beignets in New Orleans. If the Democrats, as has been intimated privately and on Instagram, at least by Chairman Moody, decided that New Orleans is lovely this time of year, and you busted your quorum, wouldn't that create an opportunity for shenanigans by the Freedom Caucus or others in the House as it relates to leadership?
Well, I hope it doesn't come to that. I don't think that would look well with the voters if we took off to Bourbon Street.
Do you promise not to go-- Do you promise not to bust the quorum?
I'm not going to promise anything. It's too early in the session, in the special. I hope we don't get to that part where we're playing shenanigans. I think we ought to deal with the sunset issue, call it a day, and go home. These other issues, the bathroom and all these other things, are not issues that Texans are asking for. They want to make sure that we keep Texas, our economy, strong.
Chairman Darby, not 15 minutes into the special, Representative Tenderholt was up at the back mic talking about legislation or a resolution that he wanted to see pass that would penalize Democrats, presumably anybody else, for busting the quorum, including loss of chairmanship. Would you support that legislation?
No. First of all, I didn't even, there was so much commotion on the floor yesterday, I don't know how--
You should have seen the Senate. It was actually worse.
I really couldn't hear a lot that was coming from the back mic.
Right. But Tenderholt's got a resolution that he was talking to the Speaker about literally 15 minutes in yesterday, saying, "I want to see penalties on the books for anybody who busts a quorum, including a loss of chairmanship." You don't support that?
I would not. I think each individual member needs to make a decision as to how they participate in the special session, and I think they ought to be held accountable for that decision for the people back home. I don't think the House ought to impose those penalties.
Very quickly, just give me a number. How many of the 20 items is going to pass? Schaefer?
This session?
Special.
I don't know.
Okay. Where's your button? Do you have your 20 and 20?
I want to get one.
Okay. Darby, how many are going to pass?
Sunset?
You didn't know either.
I think we're going to work hard on 19. I think we're going to work hard.
Some will pass--
And hopefully, some will pass.
Some, but not all.
Yes.
Are you prepared to say that more than Sunset will pass?
I hope not.
Hope not. Okay. Let's take a couple of questions before our time runs out. Agnes has her microphone in the back. She'd be more than happy if you put your hand up. Gentlemen over there, let's go over there first.
Yeah. My question is for Chairman Darby.
I would have guessed that.
During his press conference and again at TPPF on Monday, Governor Abbott said that he was interested in a property tax bill that would resemble SB 2 from the regular session or better. Senator Beck in court yesterday filed a bill for a 4% automatic rollback rate. Would you be willing to offer an amendment on the floor to take that down to a 2% automatic rollback rate?
Absolutely not. I mean, I oppose any rollback rate below the current 108. I think we have tools in place right now that protect the taxpayer. I supported 669, which put transparency in a lot of these measures, but I'm a former city councilperson. I understand about the pressures on local governments to react to the needs of their communities, and so basically, I'm opposed to lowering the rollback rate.
So you think there's real distance between, distance between the House and the Senate on this issue?
Yes.
And you think it's going to get bridged? Do you think it ultimately can get bridged?
You know, I don't know. It didn't get bridged in the regular--
Right. Come back to what's different this time.
I don't know what's changed.
Yeah, okay. Agnes, gentleman over here. I saw a hand up. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Stephen Kling, and my question is for Representative Schaefer. So I was there at the genesis. I'm from Dripping Springs, and I was there at the school board meetings where we had 160 people of Dripping Springs actually showing up in support of the trans girl that's at the center of this bathroom bill issue. I see you guys shifting your positions here when it suits you in terms of it's about protecting women in bathrooms to now you're saying it's about keeping a boy running in a girls' track meet. My question to you is this, as a fellow service member, we have a saying about keeping those decisions at the lowest level. You don't have a general trying to tell an incident who's actually in the field, in the battle, what to do. Why not leave those decisions to the principal or to the superintendent, to the local communities? And I'd like to get your thoughts on that.
Sir, well, there are certainly times that you need to do that, but that same, that commanding officer, that two-star, also puts out general orders that get down to the level sometimes whether or not someone can have alcohol or not. So sometimes, there is absolutely a time when the state, as a sovereign, sees a larger issue at play, when what one school district is doing has the potential to cause harm that sort of propagates throughout the state, then the state has a role. And the school districts and the local governments are essentially subsidiaries of the state, and that's why the state constitution puts that authority in the legislature.
Other hands. Other hands. Here. Ma'am?
Hi, this is for Mr. Schaefer as well. 46,382 people voted to put you in that chair. 54,742 did not. How does that give you some kind of mandate to be so extreme? And I would also argue that since you didn't have a challenger, I think that speaks to the disenfranchised alienation of your district, according to that score.
Well, but of course, but of course, the flip side of that is elections have consequences. If you couldn't beat Schaefer the last time, beat him next time, right?
Yeah.
Right? Do you see any merit to this argument that somehow you're not representing everybody in your district?
Look, you have voter participation question there. Government belongs to those who show up.
Yeah. Do you feel you have any obligation, do you have any obligation to represent the people who did not vote for you?
Absolutely.
Maybe that's the intimation.
Absolutely. And, look, we have these discussions in our district. No representative in the legislature represents, has identical views to everyone in their district. That's an impossibility. So what you do when you vote for someone is you look at how they're wired. You don't know what issues are going to come before them in detail. So I think it's always best to see how someone thinks and how they're wired, and if that generally lines up with your philosophy in life. And so-
And if there are enough people in your district representative who don't agree with you, then they'll come out next time and they'll beat you.
Look, our former government is messy, but it's the worst, it's the best messy system in the world.
I'm reminded that you beat Representative Leo Berman in the primary when you ran the first time, and there was a moment not long ago when Representative Berman was considered about as conservative as you could get, right?
It's true.
The definition of conservative within districts and within the state has shifted a little bit, hasn't it?
It's true.
Yeah.
Just a quick question on redistricting. If the courts in San Antonio rule while we're still in special session, will you guys be addressing those issues?
I'm trying not to look at Chairman Burkitt when you ask that question. I'm going to do this. Will you come back and talk about this? You're on the committee, Representative Darby, Chairman?
I am on the committee, and I just spent three wonderful days in San Antonio last week at the federal redistricting trial. As you may or may not recall, I was chairman of-
In 13.
House redistricting in 2013.
Indeed.
And it was a wonderful period in my life.
And so everybody knows, you were testifying on behalf of the MAPS and in defense of the state.
That's correct. The MAPS that we adopted were court-drawn, and so we talked about that last week. And if, you know, I don't know how the court or when the court's going to come out with their decision, but I'm sure our chief executive officer, former attorney general, will have some input in that, and our current attorney general-
A not disinterested party?
No. I think we'll have an opportunity to respond appropriately at that time.
Chairman Alvarado, do Democrats want to see redistricting discussed during this special?
I think in light of what's going on with the court case, we should. We seem to be in court on many issues, and I think that's going to continue to grow as long as issues that tend to discriminate keep servicing within the legislature. I hope that we can take a look at that issue and maybe have new districts that give our side a little more opportunity and work on some of that math issue that you pointed out.
Okay. Another one over there. Yes?
This is for Mr. Schaefer. So I'm a social worker here in Travis County. My license is currently a full hostage. But my clients are, like, all have serious mental illness. Most of them are homeless on the street, and most of them, or a lot of them, have shoved into foster care. And so my question for you, just, you know, as I watch my clients' programs just shrink and shrink and shrink, while I'm hearing you all talk about these extremely conservative anti-abortion bills, I'm just kind of wondering how you plan to bolster social programs if all these babies end up being born?
We have put, how many, how much more money into mental health the last two sessions? I have voted-
Couple hundred million each session.
I have voted more than once to increase funding in mental health. I've had discussions with, in my local community involved in some work groups, with our county sheriff, and with our hospitals, with the Andrews Center in my district, that we do pay attention. This is a problem that is very old. It's not going to go away anytime soon. We can do a lot better. I don't think there's anybody that's satisfied with how we're handling mental health issues in the state of Texas. I wouldn't say that at all, but to say that we haven't been working on it would not be accurate.
Representative Alvarado, you sound, you sound under your breath like you maybe have a different perspective.
Oh, did you hear me?
I did.
I'm sorry.
I think we call that a stage whisper.
I was going for the church whisper. I don't think the issue's about mental health, and I am proud of the work that we've done on mental health, and that was a priority of Speaker Strauss, and I'm glad that he made it a priority and we made things happen. But I think the point that she's making is that if you're advocating on life issues, and we are, I think everybody here is for life, but it doesn't stop when that child is born. Are you going to provide the resources to make sure that that child, once born, has food on the table, shelter, clothing, a good education that is properly funded, and a college education that is affordable?
So look at the structures that we have in place.
You talk about life, but it seems to just have a very short timeline. And when we talk about life, we're talking about an entire life.
Representative Schaefer, you know, this is not just pro-choice legislators like Representative Alvarado who've made this point. I think about Senator Lucio in the Senate, who is, because of his strong faith, is actually pro-life, but has made the same argument that pro-life means not just about abortion, it means about other programs and other issues beyond birth, and that we have to do everything for, if we're going to be pro-life, we have to extend that.
And look at the programs. And so, do we want to help people in need? Absolutely. And so, look at the programs that are in place. When you have food assistance programs in place. We have Medicaid for the poor, and any woman who steps into a hospital in the state of Texas who's pregnant gets help. You look at housing assistance. You look at the programs that are out there, and you look at the private charity that goes on. To say that Republicans are animated by, you know, some kind of an idea that we don't want to help people is simply false. But we have a different idea about how that help should be delivered sometimes. And, you know, in my own life, in my church, there's a program that our church supports, Bethesda, anybody who works at least 20 hours a week that lives in Tyler, Texas can get healthcare. You can get healthcare. So we were doing that without government assistance. But I'm telling you, we put, look at our budget that I voted for, and look at the, draw the pie chart and see how much went into education. See how much went into healthcare. So this idea that, you know, we don't care is, it's a false argument. It doesn't, the numbers tell a different story.
Agnes, do you have time for one more? Are we done? We have time for one more. I'm afraid it's all the way across the room. So, yeah, she don't come to you. Sir?
I'm just curious if you could elaborate on that. You said, "Look at the numbers in terms of the effectiveness of private spending, private philanthropy efforts, or religious efforts to address social problems versus a government-based approach." Can you elaborate on how that's more effective?
I think government often moves slowly. I think the private sector moves much more quickly. Look at the foster care issue, for example. I think, I think the bill that Representative Frank put forward that's going to encourage more groups, more faith-based groups to come to the table for foster care. Before, government was what it is now. Go back in our country's history. Go back forever. Churches have been taking care of orphans and kids in need forever. And we need to make sure that we're not doing something as a government that discourages people from all faiths to come forward and help assist. So if you give me a choice of, you know, when you look at what's effective, more often than not, the private sector is more effective at delivering services to people than the government is.
All right, we're going to call it there. 9 o'clock comes. You all go off and do your thing. We'll let these guys get back to the business of the state. Please thank Chairman Alvarado, Chairman Darby, Representative Schaefer. Thank you. We'll see you again. Appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Chairman always does. Representative-